I'm gonna take time to figure that out this morning. Alright, ready, ready? There you go, alright. Sorry everyone, we're in late this morning. I want to apologize, um, I want to welcome everybody this morning. We'll go ahead and start in the, uh, June the eighth, Mr.'s meeting, bring it to order, so. Scott, do you want to say a prayer this morning?
Amen.
Amen.
Thanks Scott, appreciate it.
Alright. You had a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes, yes, no changes.
Okay. I was not here at the last meeting, I was absent. Okay, look for a motion to approve the minutes from the, uh, May twenty fifth meeting.
Still moved.
Motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Morning Phil.
Hey, good morning guys.
Morning. Go ahead.
Um, first time on the agenda there's a bid for E and B paving. Part of this is crossings and part of it will be public all. E and B paving was. Five hundred and twenty. Anyway, CCM, community crossings, uh, E and B was the low bidder. I would recommend accepting them and they were, uh, for fourteen hundred east from State Road fifty eight to County Line Road. One hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. And then, this was non-CCMG, it'd be on sixteen fifty from fifty, five fifty eight. To the concrete there in front of the Academy Building.
Right.
And that would be in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. Again, they were, they were low bidder.
That was E and B too, also.
Present that to the board for signatures.
Okay.
They were a little tick over eighteen thousand dollars less money than Milestone.
Over or under?
Uh, they were under, eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars under Milestone, I probably said they're, they're opposite.
So they were the lowest responsive and responsible?
Responsible bidder, correct.
Okay, I've got two award bids here for E and B, one at twenty-eight, now twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents. And one at one hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy cents, correct? Look for a motion to approve those.
Still moved.
Motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Right?
Uh, there was no meeting at Highway this morning, I didn't bring a sheet, Patty, I'll email you one later on.
I've got one here, I'll just write no meeting.
Okay. Just a quick update on nine hundred east, we have, uh, utilities moving along with the relocates. R E M C, I would say is about eighty percent done, and I would, uh, ban away with the real water. Probably in the forty percent area, they, they are, do have the area between one hundred and two hundred is where our contractor wants to start, they have, have that finished up. And I believe R T C has all their main line laid as well there, which is good news. Uh, Milestone is on site, they brought in an excavator, they're getting ready to prepare, moving forward, doing some of the small drainage structures. Ripping topsoil. Switch over to my screen for just a minute, so. Just for the, for the public to know, we have a monthly newsletter that we post on the, this county's website. And you can go on here and go to the County Services tab, down to the, to the, uh, E notify. You open that, click nine hundred east safety project right there, and type in your email address and hit sign up. Anytime we post something, uh, about nine hundred east, it will automatically send you an email update. And then what you would see back over here to. Oh, I went too far. Down here where it says nine hundred east, May twenty twenty-two newsletter, if you click that, it goes, that opens up. And that tells you basically what was going on during the month of May. Give some phone numbers there, if you need to contract, contact the onsite project engineer. Or the contractor, Dwight Klein is the contract supervisor, Joe Maddox, the one onsite every day. There's his cell phone number, if you have issues out there. Tells the contract amount. Also, he usually does a few photos, what to expect in the coming month. A handy tool. That's there for everybody to see. You're always welcome to call the Highway Department as well, if you have questions. A lot of that I would defer to those guys though, because they're, they're, they're out there every day. Um, also, if you go to, uh. Links, under the Highway tab. Phil's got me throttled back here. But anyway, there's a copy of the phase for four, is four detour map. That can be loaded as well. The official detour is five fifty north, six fifty east through Montgomery and back to US fifty. In both directions, you can see where the barricades are posted out there on the strong as well.
Is that, where's the barricades, is it close to the highway or is?
Yes, yes, it's right, right by the highway.
Okay.
Yep, so as soon as you get ready to turn, you're gonna see it.
Okay.
Know that you need to detour.
Detour, okay.
Same thing up at five fifty, there's a set there on the buggy lane or, no, in the driving lane.
Okay.
As you're coming southbound, so.
It should be through traffic only, from now on?
Correct. Local traffic only.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, that's what I meant to say, local traffic, not through traffic.
Any questions on nine hundred east?
Nope, glad to get it started.
Yeah, me too. Um, I got two claim vouchers. Present to the board for single signature, um, the first one is for, um, construction inspection. In the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents. With eleven thousand, five thirty-three dol-, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents being reimbursable. And then the second one is for, uh, the P E finishing some things out there. Twenty-two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents, with seventeen hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents being reimbursable. Present those to the boards first.
Alright, I got two L P A claim vouchers here, one in the amount of. Fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-three cents, with the reimbursable of eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Second one, two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents, reimbursable, one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty cents. Looking for a motion to approve, single signature.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can you give me the screen one more time, I want to talk about this Event Manager just a second, it also has to do with nine hundred east and the road closures. There is, uh, W T H, they do all of our G I S, uh, mapping here. At house, they have a product called Event Manager, um, Knox County actually has this. And what this does, it allows myself or dispatch, anybody really, M A Director. Be able to post any kind of event that's happening in the county on the G I S map. So for instance, um, the fire department, the volunteer firefighters, we'll go to this public website. See exactly where these closures are at. And it does update real time, so as soon as I change something at the Highway Department, it posts it to the online version. And as well, as it syncs it up with our map in Indianapolis, so anybody that has stations in their vehicles, such as the deputies or, uh. Mass ambulances.
Right.
Would, would see that update right away and know that the, the point of closure, where it's exactly where it's at. We do, we do a good job of posting the, the verbiage, goes out to the radio stations and newspaper and all that stuff. But, you know, when it comes to.
Film an access map to see it, yeah.
Exactly, um, you know, for instance, uh, a pipe, there could be somebody that lives right beside it on the north or south side of it on Canterbury Road. And if an ambulance needs to get to that house, they need to know which side of that, of, that pipe is, where, exactly where it's closed.
Close that, yeah.
And know if they need to come in from the north or the south with their ambulance or fire truck or whatever. Um, I think Gary took this to the E nine one one board yesterday.
So it's, uh, this is, I think Danny takes care of all the G I S map, doesn't he, through his office?
He, he does, but this would not be.
This is separate, this is a completely separate part of it.
Since it's a public safety function.
Okay.
We felt like the best funding source was for, for the E nine one one funding to pay for.
Right.
It's, it's forty-three hundred dollars of one-time upfront cost, and then the maintenance on it is seventeen hundred per year.
Per year.
Yeah.
Is this something we just go to them, ask them to add that as a layer? Is that, is that what we?
It, it's what's, what, that's what we've done in the past, but I'm not sure.
Kelly, just state your name real quick.
This is Kelly Streeter, um, I'm a user of the map as well as here in the county, I'm assisted with A V L and other programs. So I'm familiar with this because I did implement it in a county next to us. But ultimately, it's two products, we have our base maps that we use and land information that Denny uses, that the maps use. We use it dispatch and, and the highway primarily for everyday information. And the layers we create update on everyone's map locally, but on the public side, which is a different product. Um, we have our county website, but this A V L, uh, or this, this Event Manager allows editors. Uh, in dispatch or the sheriff or the highway to put up real-time information, um, with notes. On the public-facing website as well as our individual users, so it puts them all together to make these live events.
Yeah, so it looks like you guys in Knox County are using it already, that's Vincent's right there, it looks like.
I, uh, yes, and I, um, at the County Highway Department also, we, we, um, we've been talking about doing this for years, we've just never been able to implement it. But E M A does it there and dispatch.
Okay.
So it's, it's a readily-used tool, especially when flooding occurs, that, that's a big help.
Huge, yeah, yeah. Thanks Kelly. I don't have any issue with it at all, Ron, you got anything on that?
Nope, sounds good.
Yeah, you said E nine one one's gonna fund that through you guys' funds, okay.
Yeah.
So do we need a motion on that, or?
Probably.
Okay, look, entertain a motion to, uh. Have a W T H I Event Manager software, um, paid for out of E nine one one funding through the E nine one one board.
Still moved.
Motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
They didn't say about, anything about being any kind of contractor, if there is, I obviously I'll bring that back to you guys.
Okay.
Um, the, the nice thing about this too, we will create a link on our, on our. Babys.org site to the map over here to the side, so that people can. They can't remember, they go to the W T H, they can click on the link, it'll automatically take them there to our, to our side of things.
Is that how it comes up on ours? I can't remember how it is, W T H or does it come up G I S or how's it come up?
Yeah.
Typed in, if you typed in the search bar G I S, would it pop it up?
Question, find that.
On the assessor's page, it, um, has a G I S mapping that takes you to the.
It does, it has a link.
Yeah.
On the assessor's page, I don't really assess G I S. Try to, there it is, useful links.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good.
Warren, you're leaving our site. We are.
Hey.
And then the last thing I have for the day is the, uh, speed petition, requesting, uh, speed study, again Gary. Twelve twenty-five east between State Road fifty-eight and the Dead End.
This is Painted Acres Road, right?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
What is, is there no posted speed limit after right now?
There's not.
Okay.
So it's default fifty-five mile an hour.
I don't think anybody traveled, I mean, well, I should say, every time I've been up there, I haven't seen a lot of people travel fifty-five, but. At least we get a good feel what the speed needs to be then.
I've been communicating with Michaela Wagler on this, she took it around to the neighbors and had.
Yeah, looks like the, looks like she's got everybody on there, looks like.
Pretty much.
Yeah. I don't have any trouble with this speed study, Ron, do you have any?
Nope.
Guess I'll look for a motion to, uh, have Gary do a speed study. On County Road twelve twenty-five east between State Road fifty-eight and the Dead End on the north end.
Still moved.
Yeah, there, motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Gary, now that we've approved it, do you have any issue?
I, I will say this.
I, uh.
The city's been using the, the portable radar speed signs to do these types of things. I think that would be an excellent investment at some point for us to have a couple of those.
I mean, though, I guess I didn't, I'm not a huge proponent of slowing people down, I just think that you shouldn't impede flow of traffic. There is, there is places it needs to happen, right? There's a hundred percent places it needs to happen. The only thing I see with the speed signs, that thing's flashing at you.
Actually, you can turn that off.
I'm just saying, when you see that sign if you're, and it's reading your speed or whatever it's, whatever it's doing, I mean. People are automatically gonna slow down, so are you getting a correct speed study? I don't know if you are or not.
Well, yeah, you can, you can make them just stay blank, in other words, put, put, your, your speed limit would be pat, fifty-five is what it would say on that sign. And the, the display would just stay blank while you're collecting your data. Which. Okay, am I telling them wrong?
No, you're telling them right.
Okay.
If we do a speed study, we don't, we sit up there with unmarked cars.
I understand, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I.
Yeah.
I just don't, I don't feel that if it's unposted, it's fifty-five miles an hour, right? And if.
No matter how crappy the road is.
But if you have a fully marked, visible car sitting there running radar, people are gonna slow down, so you're not, you're not getting a true accurate reading of that speed.
That's why we use the.
And then if we put a, have a flashing sign there, you're gonna be doing the same thing, basically.
Yeah, we don't use those too.
Yeah. So, but now I know you guys are always sitting on marked car, and you try to get out, out of the viewing of the public, so you get a true record speed of, of that road.
So, but, uh, and this is the racetrack road, right?
Right, yeah.
Talking about it, we'll probably have, I'm sure on race day. Uh, when they have races out there, it's probably completely different than it is Monday.
Yeah, I would say, I'd say Monday through Friday for the, just the public that live out there, you're probably gonna have people speed, but every time I've been down a road, I've never seen anybody running.
It, it's not a.
Really fast, so.
It's not a road that you can go real fast on.
Yeah, I'd say that road, that road there, I'd say, when you do a speed say, it's gonna lower the, it will lower the miles per hour. So whatever that is, I don't know, but we'll, I guess we'll find out.
We'll get it done, so. Have you had extra patrol requested like that? No. But we are, we are sending a lot of ambulances up there, I can tell you that. Haven't had any requests for extra patrol during the time. But I think it's so crowded that nobody can really get.
I haven't been up to, been there for a while, but I've been up there before and seen, sometimes in the day of the event, they'll, they'll have signs posted, slow down please, you know, respect. Respect the neighbors and stuff down through there, so. Alright.
Right.
Thanks Gary.
That's all I have, unless you guys have something for me.
I, yeah, do you think, Bill, do not? I don't think so, I called you on that road up there on fourteen hundred there yesterday, and that was about it, I think, so.
Um, we are in the middle of starting our summer projects, we've got all the rock, uh, stone laid on two hundred north. Believe they'll have all the calcium sprayed by the end of the week if the, if the rain stays away. Uh, about half, a little less than half of the dust controls are sprayed. So, we'll keep moving forward.
We're on it. And we do have Highway fifty-seven closed with the unofficial detour down two hundred east all the way to thousand.
Yes.
Back over to Highway fifty-seven, the city's having trouble, people coming across eleven hundred.
We, we did, we, we went and posted road closed barricades at eleven hundred right there by fifty-seven.
Seven.
Westbound.
Okay.
Yeah, because we were having people come all the way to the last barricade, which they always do, and make a right-hand turn.
Turn, yeah.
Sends them into the river bottoms and there's, like for a semi, there's a bridge down there, I can see it getting destroyed, so.
Yeah, well, we can't make that corner anyhow, so.
Well, you can't, but there'd be people that would try.
Right, yeah.
Knock the banisters off the bridge, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good.
And it, even the in-doc closures, we'll do our best to get those on that Event Manager, so people can see just what you saw in Knox County, the same thing.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Uh, when did they close, it was last week they closed Brothers Creek, somewhere it was.
Yes, last Monday.
Last Monday, okay.
And we did spray the chloride in front of the homes yesterday.
Okay. I appreciate that, it'll help a bunch.
Yesterday afternoon, this rain, raining every day is really messing us up on our dust control, it's, uh, very challenging.
Alright, sounds good, appreciate it Phil.
Thank you guys.
Alright, we got a B I S contract here. Which is, who's powering this meeting right now? Okay, we got a B S, B A, B I S contract here for eight hundred and seventy dollars. Um.
Michael, that is, um, to maintain our system that we had, that we can use remotely, um. Not actually the one that we're using today.
Using here, okay.
So, if, if the commissioners, um, want to have the capability to, they'll have that available to us, um.
That's what we're discussing right now, for a policy to have off-site meetings, I mean, not, not off-site meetings, but a mobile meeting, I guess.
Well, um.
Is that what you're talking about?
No, sir, th- this is, uh, you know, the old system that we had, that we had to set up and take down every time, it was, uh. And we used it, excuse me, and we used it when we did have remote meetings. So, it's that module, or whatever you want to call it, that we, if we want to maintain that, that's what that contract is for.
Okay.
We've had this since two thousand and eight?
We've had it, uh, Gail, I think, is the one that implemented the B I S services, and when we were in the other building, that was the only thing that we had that recorded our meetings. Now, since we're in the new building, we have a new system, uh, which we're very appreciative of, and we don't have to take it down and set it back up at each meeting, you just come in and.
So do we have any use, do we, we still have off-site meetings every once in a while?
Well, that was the, uh, question, do we want to maintain that for a backup or for other purposes, um?
I know we're still discussing whether or not it's legal to have a meeting outside this room or not, so. I would probably recommend we. Keep this contract for at least, is it just yearly contract, right, grant?
I believe that, I mean, it's just a renewal.
Do you have any?
If it's a redundant system, question is, if you don't have it and you need it, what do you do? You just make do, right?
Go back to writing, writing all the amendments out and everything.
Right, so you don't have an official recording that.
Then also, if we, you know, if, if we do deem it's legal, though, we could have a meeting in Oden or down at Offersville. Once or twice a year, and that's what Patty would use to record the meeting.
Okay, my question to Patty would be, do you feel it's necessary? I mean.
Um, there's, uh, value perhaps in having it as a backup or. For those remote-type settings, that if we needed it, we do have it. Um, we can evaluate that in a year's time and maybe make a better determination if it is redundant and we don't have any use for it, or if we can implement. Other types of, uh, systems to achieve the same goal.
Okay.
But those determinations are kind of hard to make right at this point.
Right. I don't have any is, any issue of, uh. Go ahead and go forward with this contract for at least one more year, and we could always revisit it before, for, uh, next year then.
Okay.
I guess, fine with that?
Yes, sir.
I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, B I S contract of eight hundred and seventy dollars for a one-year contract.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Ron Aron, I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, Southern Business Machines and. Wanted in leasing contract, Janice Williams, good morning Janice. How you doing this morning? Good.
Um, this contract is for our postal machine that we use over in the office, it's. I usually talk with Southern Business Machines, but then we pay our postage to Quadient Leasing. And I had a contract with them that, um, was signed back in two thousand and sixteen, and this one, it's for sixty months. I did check in to see if it could be, um, a shorter time period. But she said that if we did it for a shorter time period, the cost would increase per month.
Per month.
So I have, like if, um.
The three thirty a month?
What is it?
Three hundred and thirty dollars per month, is that right?
And it was three twenty-five before.
Three twenty-five, okay.
It would be, four hundred and sixty-three twenty would be the monthly payment if I dropped it down to thirty-six months, or five hundred and eighty-two-five for twenty-four months.
So it was a pretty huge difference, yeah.
So, um, and I've had really good luck with them, the person I deal with at Southern Business Machines is always really helpful and. You know, if I ever have any issues, but normally, we don't have any problems with them.
You've had the contract before, you, you've used them for a while, the clerk's office has, right?
Yes, since two thousand and sixteen, well, and someone may have used them, Rose or Sharon may have used them before that.
Okay.
I remember, but.
Any questions for Janice?
No.
She's happy with it. Makes sense to go longer.
Okay, I've got a contract here for, uh, oh, Southern Business Machines and Quadient Leasing. Yeah, sixty-month contract at three hundred and thirty dollars per month. That'll be able to fund three-seven-one-hundred. And I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Janice. Appreciate it. All right, get the health department update fee ticket. Kathy?
Morning.
Did you finally get some vacation time in?
Yes, I did. Awesome. Gonna have another one coming up here shortly.
There you go. You guys are, and well-deserved over that.
Thank you. Um, normally we come later on in the year for updated fee ticket, but CMS, which is the organization that sets the fee schedule for Medicare and Medicaid, raised the administration fee for the COVID vaccines, um, and they raised it to forty dollars administration fee. So we are asking to continue with the CMS guidelines and to raise our administration fee for the COVID vaccines, all three of them, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer, to the forty dollars, um, per injection. And again, this is to build insurance. If they don't have insurance, then we have a hardship policy where there's no, there's no barrier.
Fair, okay.
No money.
So all those three injections will be forty dollars?
Uh-huh. We would build to Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance companies. And again, if someone doesn't have the ability to pay our insurance, then we fall back to our hardship policy and, um, there is no requirement for financial.
All right.
And then while I was here, we did have our Rototech also increased their fee, so I added, it went up about ten dollars.
Ten dollars, okay.
So it's a hundred and ten now.
All right, is that all the changes there?
Yes. So, um, since COVID vaccines started, um, in January, uh, the state of Indiana was doing, uh, insurance billing for us. Um, beginning July first, we will be taking over COVID, uh, insurance billing.
Okay.
So, um, sort of all happening together at the same time. I know this has to be posted for thirty days. Um, but July first, we will take over. We currently do our own billing for all vaccines, but the state, um, took over the COVID vaccine billing in the beginning. But July first, we will take that on as well as all our other billing that we do.
All right, sounds good. Anything else with that, Ron? Anything for Kathy? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, fee schedule for the health department for the, uh, COVID vaccines. They all raised to forty, from zero to forty dollars. And then we have a rotavirus, uh, Rotech, up to a hundred and ten dollars from a hundred dollars. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Kathy.
Gary?
How you doing this morning? We got Sheriff's Department metal detector quote.
Ron was at the last meeting. I'm not exactly sure. I thought about it quite a bit, and I guess my some timers was completely active that day. Uh, I, I missed this, uh, this quote here was for the baggage scanner. The bottom part of that quote was for a metal detector and a handheld wand. Price of that was twenty-five thousand with, with all three, uh, pieces of equipment, uh, warranty and that stuff. But this other company had a metal detector that was a thousand dollars cheaper than this one. So what I did was I called this company and said, "Can you come down a thousand dollars on your metal detector?" And they did. So we just deal with one company. I think they're wanting to pay this out of, uh, our funds. Sure what paperwork has to be done to do that. Nathan and Ron approved the baggage scanner on this quote, and then they approved the metal detector on the other quote because it was cheaper. Now I got it all.
All in one quote?
All in one, and it was one company. And it was my oversight. I knew it was there, but didn't click that day. I don't know.
Okay, this is...
It's my mistake.
I was, I was at the last meeting. This is on the last meeting then?
Right.
Okay.
The ones we approved, you no longer want?
The metal detector, I know. The metal detector and this one will work fine, yeah. But once I, I went over to sit down, looked at it, and realized I'd made a mistake, I'm like, I'll just correct it at the...
Hey. You remember what fund that was at? You don't remember what fund that was?
I believe they decided to take it out of, uh, AR, the ARP.
ARP money.
ARP money. Patty?
You know where this is, Patty?
I was also not at the last meeting, so I'm not sure of that. We can check the record, but I thought that it was my understanding that it was the CARES Act money, the original CARES Act money that they were, that you were wanting to request. So that would go through the rainy day, and it would go through the commissioners and the council with appropriation.
Okay. So, we got it. Sounds like we're going in the right direction. We just need to...
Right.
Just switch from two vendors to one vendor, right, is what you're saying?
I think it would be easier for all of them to...
Hey. You got any more questions on that, Ron? Now you was here. Everything look good to you?
Trust in, trust in your advice.
I, I've, yeah, I got it all this time, I think. I'm telling you, I don't, I spend entirely too much time trying to figure out how I overlooked that.
Okay. So I guess we just need to, uh...
And there's a process that Patty's got that I have to go through to get...
Yeah, once we, if, if we approve this and everything, just need to get Patty, make sure we get the funding lined out, so she knows what it is and everything. Where, where it needs to become, where it comes from, so...
We'll use the same, uh, form that we used for the IFA when we were in the CARES Act money with the state. We'll use that same form. It'll come to, um, it may bypass you at this point since you already approved it, and then it'll go on through to the council for the appropriation process for the money, if that's your wishes today.
That'd be fine. Is that fine with you, Ron?
It'll save us step.
I guess we'll rescind the last, uh,
Yeah.
motion for the, uh, metal detector stuff. We got a new quote here now. This'll be on the same motion for Adani, I guess, A-D-A-N-I-N-I, for, uh, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Gary. Okay, we got the CRF Care Act request. And...
Kelly, is that yours? Okay, thank you.
I guess I missed this in my pack. I was just trying to catch up real quick, sorry.
That's fine. Um, actually, I'm going to strike half of it, or ask that half of it be stricken. Uh, Kelly Streeter, um, Public Health Emergency Preparedness for the Health Department. I submitted a request for eight hundred and nine dollars, eight hundred and five dollars and ninety cents to reimburse the Health Department for syringes, um, for a COVID vaccine.
Right.
The state did send, uh, supplies. However, the supplies they sent weren't, um, fit for our patients. We need a range of gauges, and the ones they sent were extremely large and didn't feel great about little kids. So I say little kids, twelve-year-olds and over.
Right.
So we did purchase some to keep in stock for COVID vaccine, and we wish to be reimbursed for those supplies.
Hey, and the other one, you're, you said you're gonna cancel this one out?
Well, yes, um, in true, uh, State Department of Health form, uh, today, this, well, late yesterday, early this morning, Dr. Holsoppa was in the office. Uh, we have been, uh, awarded, or all ninety-two counties in Indiana have been awarded additional COVID vaccine operation funds for supplies, contract, services, employees, things of that nature. And the amount of sixty-seven thousand dollars roughly. So the ten thousand that we were going to need to pay for our COVID clinics in June and July, we will now have funding.
Funding for it, yeah.
Um, I will get that notice sent to the auditor's office today. We were also, um, noticed a second award for nine thousand, eight hundred dollars for COVID vaccine clinics we held in March, or, or, or in May. So we've got roughly eighty thousand dollars coming for COVID vaccine operations, and we won't need CARES Act funds now.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it, Kyle. All right, I've got a coronavirus, coronavirus relief fund reimbursement request form here in the amount of, uh, eight hundred and five dollars and ninety cents to the health department for reimbursement for vaccines. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next thing on the agenda is the CRF, or wait a minute, we ever done that, ARP ordinance? You want to top of that, Grant, a little bit?
Sure. Um, auditor and I have talked about this ARP ordinance. We got some drafts from other locations and a draft from the state. Patty can speak to imminence of it and the, and the immediate need for it. But essentially, it will allow us to receive funds in from American Recovery Plan Act. That will go to a specific fund. Similar to the CARES Act, there will be a process for reimbursement of those
Funds.
Of those expenditures.
Yeah.
I believe that fund is listed on your ordinance there. It's, um, handwritten in. We do have the preliminary steps to, um, that we followed from the State Board of Accounts. Um, that fund is, uh, established unofficially, but officially with the signing of the ordinance, we can go ahead and complete the process. But we have the money in-house. Received part of that initial allotment. We'll have to, and we received the first one.
We've got the first payment ready.
We have received the first money, yes.
So that's fund number eighty-nine fifty? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any more questions on that, on the ordinance, Ron? So I've not, I look for a motion to approve the, uh, ordinance for establishing the ARP fund and matters related to thereof, to the fund of eighty-nine fifty.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Thanks, Grant. All right. Anybody else have, have any to the commissioners? If not, I'll look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjourn.
So moved.
Would you, um...
What's that?
Amend that. You cannot adjourn the meeting. We have the commissioner's budget.
Correct. Okay.
So you can payroll and claims, yes, but if you would not adjourn the meeting?
Meeting, okay. So need a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and then we have a, a budget hearing since, since meetings, this meeting is, uh, done today. We're not gonna adjourn. The commissioners will still be, still be here for our budget hearings.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.